Ready? Okay. I'd like to call the July 23rd, 2025 Meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Can we have roll call? Oh, I guess I need to read the part about the executive session. Sorry. Carol, our chair is not here today, so I am stepping in as vice chair. Notice of option to recess into executive session pursuant to ARS 36-431.02. Notice is hereby given to the members of the commission and to the general public that at this meeting, the commission may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for legal advice and discussion with the commission's attorney for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. Now we can do roll call.
Carol Mandino. Joshua Maher will be arriving late tonight. Christine Sheehy.
Present.
CJ Lukey.
Present.
Mary Norton.
Present.
Ian Sharp.
Present.
Megan Weller.
Present.
Thank you.
Moving on to item three, public comment. Do we have anybody here for public comment? Sarah Decter.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. I'm Sarah Decter. I'm the comprehensive and neighborhood planning manager for the city of Flagstaff. And I just want to do a brief announcement to let you all know that the public hearing draft of the Flagstaff Regional Plan 2045 is now online if you would like to start reviewing it. And I'd like to go over very quickly, I know Nancy's going to start the timer on me, that the key dates to know in the upcoming hearing process. August 27th will be the Planning and Zoning Commission's citizen review session. So this is kind of part two of the retreat that you had with city council and the Board of Supervisors in May. It is an opportunity to ask questions and to have the public ask questions of both the commission and staff. Public comments or questions provided at the August 27th hearing will not be part of the record of proceedings for the public hearings. So that's really important to know. September 10th will be the first public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it will be held somewhere other than City Hall, which is a state statutory requirement. So just to prepare you all, your September 10th meeting will not be here in chambers. It will be at an alternate location that we are working on finalizing to make sure all the AV and streaming and everything works for you, just like you are here. September 24th will be your second and final public hearing. It'll be a continuation of the hearing from the 10th. It will be an opportunity for you to also have public comment. The city council has scheduled a special meeting for Thursday, October 9th, to hold their public hearing. The only thing on that agenda is the regional plan. So it is six uninterrupted hours of regional plan discussion for council. And that will be the conclusion of this process. So, at least up until the point where we have a ballot initiative. So I wanted you all to be aware of those upcoming dates. One other thing to make you aware of is, a little different from the way we have done things previously, we are going to be setting up a distribution email for all public comments for the hearings, both Planning and Zoning and city council. So everything is coming in once and going out to everyone. This means you will be receiving public comments in the email where you typically receive your Planning and Zoning Commission correspondence, unless you would like an alternate email to be used. If you want an alternate email to be used, one that is not where you typically get your correspondence, please let Nancy Corbin Fuller know, and she has access to update that on the spreadsheet, which we will be sending to IT on Friday. So also, some things to know about that email is you should not respond to emails that you receive through the distribution email. Those are just for you to read in preparation of the public hearing and to make sure that everything gets to you. I will also be packaging them up and attaching them. Also, if you respond, members of the public will have your personal email or your work email, which may not be something you're interested in pursuing. So please let Alex and I know if you think, or if a email you receive requests a response, and we will coordinate a staff response to those comments. And that is all I have for you tonight. So I hope these announcements were helpful. I will be back with you in about four weeks to start this process. So thank you all.
Thank you. So this part of public comment was for anything that wasn't on our agenda. So if there's anybody else that has public comment, I'll read this part. At this time, any member of the public may address the commission or on any subject within their jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the commission on that day. Due to open meeting laws, the commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion of the agenda. To address the commission on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for the chair to call for public comment at the time that item is heard. Do we have any other public comment? No? Okay, we'll move on to agenda item four, approval of minutes from our last meeting, which was Wednesday, June 25th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the last meeting minutes.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion or changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved.
Excuse me, could you please clarify who seconded?
Christine.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to item number five, which is a public hearing for PZ-22-00109-04, a direct-to-ordinance zoning map amendment. Start with the staff report first, or staff presentation.
Thank you for clarifying. I didn't want to read the whole report. Good afternoon. My name's Ben Mahia. I'm a planner with the city of Flagstaff, Planning and Development Services. I am not even set up yet, but I just got so excited. There we go. For your consideration today, we have a direct-to-ordinance zoning map amendment for Pine Haven. This site is located on 2951 South Masonic Lane, at the southwest intersection of... Oh, should I wait for a moment? I'll just hang on while we...
Are we waiting for something to come up screen? Okay.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
Let me just start over. So this is 2951 South Masonic Lane, the southwest intersection of South Lone Tree and East Zuni Drive intersection. It is bounded to the north by a vacant parcel in the public facility zone and in the suburban commercial zone at that corner. To the east by Cookineway Community College in the public facility zone. To the south by a vacant parcel in the HR zone, as well as a single-family subdivision in the MR zone. To the west, it's kind of back where we started in that public facilities vacant parcel. The existing conditions of the site is rural residential and suburban commercial split-zoned parcel within the resource protection overlay. It is a vacant 13.82-acre parcel, and it provides access to Pinnacle Pines, the subdivision to the south, by means of an access easement known as Masonic Lane. The proposed condition is for a rezone of the property to the medium-density residential zone within resource protection overlay to allow for 83 residential units. Going into a little detail about the density, the MR zone allows for a density range of six to nine units per acre in the resource protection overlay outside of an activity center. Rezones also need to meet general plan conformance, so we did, or regional plan conformance. So the area type is suburban neighborhood, existing suburban neighborhood, and allows for a density range of two to 13 units per acre. This is, again, 83 units, which comes to six units per acre. The proposed density is within the allowed density range of the MR zone, as well as the regional plan area type of existing suburban neighborhood. Or of suburban neighborhood. This project is taking advantage of an affordable housing incentive while not providing affordable housing onsite. There is a contribution, a financial contribution to the city's Affordable Housing Fund, totaling $1.8 million approximately. This contribution is in lieu of constructing 10 Category 1 affordable units at 12% of the total unit count, which allows for the use of three affordable housing incentives. This project is using one, and that is for a reduction to the forest resource protection requirements. That is a reduction of 35%. Taking a look at site design, you'll see that they are locating all of the, really all of the development central to the site. Outside of the setbacks, the front setback is 10 feet. In the MR zone, 15 for above the second story. Side is five feet, the rear is 15 feet. This project has a unit mix type that really prioritizes three-bedroom units. The majority is three-bedroom units at 72 being provided, with some two- and four-bedroom units being provided. They are meeting the 15% lot area common space requirement through the resource protection areas that surround the site. And at the time of review, a 5% civic space was required. It's no longer required for residential-only projects, but it remains a part of this project, and that is being met at 6.7% of the lot area through public access trails that kind of meander around the periphery of the site. For parking, the required parking is 188 spaces. They're providing 189. Bicycle parking, the required amount is nine spaces. They are providing 12. This project is currently proposed under two phases, so we'll look at it. Also, just kind of geographically, it makes sense to look at it this way. But Phase 1 is to the west of Masonic Lane and includes 40 residential units, as well as the clubhouse. It is oriented towards a central east-west drive connecting Zuni to Masonic Lane. There's a sidewalk on the north side of that drive. Part of this project will be to provide new bike lane and sidewalk along Zuni, the entire frontage of Zuni, as well as two bus stops on Zuni going east and west direction, so on both sides of the road, and a detention basin to address stormwater management concerns. On the east side of Masonic Lane are the remaining 43 residential units. Again, oriented towards a central east-west drive connecting Lone Tree to Masonic Lane. That sidewalk is continued on the north side of the drive. The driveway connection off of Lone Tree is right-in, right-out. And in creating a new right-in lane, they'll be reconstructing the sidewalk and providing new five-foot parkway. Just briefly going through the building design to show that it does meet the architectural design standards for material light reflectance value and massing. And resource protection, as I said earlier, there's an affordable housing incentive being utilized that reduces the forest preservation requirements, and we'll go through that. So the base residential requirement is 50% of forest resources being preserved. The incentive, or the affordable housing reduction, reduces by 35%. So the new requirement is 32.5%, and they are proposing a preservation of 33.6%. For slope preservation, all slope categories are being preserved. As part of the site plan, a preliminary landscape plan was submitted and met all landscaping standards. As part of the development agreement, the applicant commits to a meaningful amount of pollinator-friendly landscaping. That will be further evaluated with the final landscape plan as part of the civil plan review. Public systems impact analyses were required. The traffic impact study based on the original proposal of 87 residential units, obviously it's now 83, but the original proposal of 87 residential units, estimated peak hour trip generation of 48 vehicles per hour in the morning and 56 vehicles per hour in the afternoon. For stormwater, the drainage impact study proposed or studied the existing and proposed conditions of this project and found that the proposed stormwater system had sufficient capacity to address two 10- and 100-year storm events. For water and wastewater, a WISA or Water Sewer Impact Analysis was completed in March 10th, 2023. And this project will bring new eight-inch water mains and sewer mains to the site to service each unit. Rezones do require neighborhood meetings. Two were held for this project. The first on October 17th, 2024, and the second November 21st, 2024. For the sign-in sheet, the first meeting had 17 attendees, and the second 10. Concerns were raised regarding traffic, parking, impacts to natural environment, fractional ownership, and short-term rentals. And fractional ownership was something that, while not being part of the application itself, was something that was proposed to the neighbors in the neighborhood meeting. After neighborhood response or neighbor response, the applicant stated that they would no longer pursue that model. They removed it from their proposal. Now, that was never part of the application and hasn't been added into the development agreement to preclude fractional ownership, but the developer or the applicant did remove short-term rentals. So no leases under 30 days would be permitted. So as I alluded to, there will be a development agreement that is currently being finalized. There are a number of things being addressed, but here the highlights. The first is the developer obligations for public improvements to rights-of-way, development phasing, restrictions on short-term rentals, no leases under 30 days, the administration of the Affordable Housing Fund contribution payments, and commitments to sustainability initiatives, which there are a few that I've highlighted here. First is that these are 100% electric units. There are no gas lines being brought onto the site. There are two electric vehicle charging stations onsite for public access, as well as hookups for each unit in garages and for driveway access for the handful of units that do not have garages. A bus pass program for first-year owners. And the applicant also promotes the use of the EcoPass for Educators program, bike share program for residents, and as previously stated, the pollinator-friendly landscaping. Rezonings need to meet the following findings. The first is that the proposed amendment is consistent with and conforms to the goals of the general plan and any applicable specific plans. The second, that the proposed amendment will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare of the city, and will add to the public good as described in the general plan. And the third, the affected site is physically suitable in terms of design, location, shape, size, operating characteristics, and the provision of public and emergency vehicle access and public services and utilities to ensure that the requested zone designation and the proposed or anticipated uses and/or development will not endanger, jeopardize, or otherwise constitute a hazard to the property or improvements in the vicinity in which the property is located. Finding one, which is conformance with the general plan. As we talked about with the proposed density, this is within the density range for suburban neighborhood area type. And the proposed unit type is in conformance with the desired development patterns for suburban neighborhood. It also highlighted most of the goals and policies that have been included in my staff report. For the comprehensive list, you can refer to the staff report. But the ones that I wanted to point out are E and C 10.5, support the development of watchable wildlife recreation opportunities. And OS 1.4, use open spaces as opportunities for non-motorized connectivity to interact with nature and to enjoy the views in quiet. As we saw in the site plan, this project utilizes a public access trail through resource protection areas kind of extensively throughout the site to provide those opportunities. Underwater Resources, WR 4.3, development requiring public utility services will be located within the urban growth boundary. It is within the urban growth boundary and utilizes existing infrastructure. Under Energy, E 2.1, promote renewable energy sources that reduce demand upon fossil fuels and other forms of generation that produce waste. And E 1.13, promote and encourage the use of fuel-efficient vehicles that use renewable fuels. And as we previously stated, there are a handful of sustainability initiatives as part of this project. The first is that the units will be 100% electric. The bike share program that the developer is proposing, the bus pass program for, both for first-year homeowners, as well as encouraging the use of the EcoPass for Educators program, which allows for NAU educators to have mountain line passes. The two EV charging units onsite and the EV hookups in all residential units all speak to conformance with those goals and policies. Moving on, we also have community character, CC 3.2, maintain and enhance existing buildings and blend well-designed new buildings into existing neighborhoods. This project uses townhome-style units with building massing compatible with adjacent development. Under Growth Areas and Land Use, LU 5.1, encourage development patterns within the designated growth boundaries to sustain efficient infrastructure and maintenance projects and maintenance. LU 5.2 is promote infill development over peripheral expansion to conserve environmental resources, spur economic investments, and reduce the cost of providing infrastructure and services. And as previously stated, this site already has the infrastructure to support the development. Under Transportation, T 1.6, provide and promote strategies that increase alternate modes of travel and demand for vehicular travel to reduce peak-period traffic. Both the bike share program and the bus pass programs speak to that. And under Neighborhoods, Housing and Urban Conservation, NH 3.5, encourage and incentivize affordable housing. And NH 5.2, provide adequate resources for individuals experiencing homelessness. The financial contribution provides conformance with these policies. Under Finding 2, Community Benefits and Public Good. The developer will provide improvements along East Zuni Drive and South Lone Tree Road, including new and/or improved sidewalk, parkway, and a bike lane. The developer will provide two bus stops serving both directions along East Zuni. And the developer will contribute to the city of Flagstaff Affordable Housing Fund commensurate with 10 Category 1 affordable units, or 12% of the total unit count, at a total contribution of 1.8 million. Finding 3, that the site is physically suitable. It meets all applicable codes and requirements. The site plan was approved on May 9th, 2024, subject to direct-to-ordinance zoning map amendment. And it mitigates any impacts determined by the impact analyses. The traffic, water, sewer, and drainage impact analyses were all completed and found to be sufficiently mitigated. Offsite improvements include the bike lane, sidewalk, and right-turn lane from Lone Tree. And with that, staff recommends the commission forward the request to city council with a recommendation of approval in accordance with the findings and subject to the following conditions. The subject property must be developed in accordance with the approved site plan and the conditions of approval dated May 9th, 2024. Modifications other than minor modifications to the approved site plan will require an amendment to this direct-to-ordinance zoning map amendment request. All other requirements of the zoning code and other city codes, ordinances, and regulations shall be met by the proposed development. All terms, conditions, and restrictions detailed within the Pine Haven Development Agreement must be fully satisfied. And in the event the property is rezoned and the developer fails to obtain final civil plan approval within two years of the effective date of the rezoning ordinance, then the city may schedule a public hearing before the city council for the purpose of causing the zoning on the property to revert to the former classification of rural residential and suburban commercial in accordance with ARS 9-462.01. With that, the applicant is here, and they do have a presentation for you as well.
Do we have any questions for Ben first, before we move to the applicant? I do. On finding four, where it says it may, if they don't obtain their civil plan within two years, that it may revert to prior zoning, is that a new policy? From my recollection, if somebody doesn't develop, it automatically reverts back to prior zoning?
This is not an automatic, this is may. So at the discretion of, I believe it's council's discretion, it can be heard to rezone it back to the original.
Okay, so it's not an automatic revert. Okay. And then I had a question, as staff looked at some of this, the drainage in the quote "parkway," sort of the divides the curb and gutter and the sidewalk along Zuni, that remains uncovered, more like a swale, a drainage swale?
That would have been studied by the stormwater.
Okay, so it doesn't become underground or covered? It's still?
Not based off of any site plans in the middle.
Okay. And then, when I was, the cut into the slope that goes 30 to 35 feet, where there's a large retaining wall, there wasn't a lot of detail at this stage. How does staff evaluate what that might look like, not only from an engineering point of view, but also from an aesthetic point of view?
So retaining wall is internal to the site? So the zoning code has regulations on retaining walls that are visible from the right-of-way? Are you speaking?
So there's a pretty big cut area where they're going to cut into a large slope to tuck in units?
Yes.
And I just wanted to know, like, you know, what's your review of how that wall will look?
Aesthetically, there's nothing that I can speak to about the aesthetics of the retaining wall when it's not visible from the right-of-way.
So I suppose it's mostly maybe visible to the units that are there? So it's not as much of a concern to the city? Is that how I'm understanding it?
The language of the retaining wall, which is a limitation on the height of a retaining wall, is when it's visible from the right-of-way.
Okay. And then I had questions on the traffic impact study. Since it was done in December of 2022, there wasn't a specific date given or a timeframe in December. And that was, you know, was school in, out, college in, out, still post-COVID. But there's been a lot of development in those three, almost, you know, three years of Juniper Point and Pine Canyon. So the only mitigation really is the right-hand turn lane into the project off of Lone Tree. But there was nothing that was required of the intersection of Lone Tree and Zuni. Is that correct?
Right, and part of that is because, and I do have, somewhere back there is Steph Santana with traffic. But Lone Tree is an ongoing improvements project by the city. So some of that is working with what kind of common sense? So some of that is, is working with what kind of, kind of common sense development of, of that area. So in this case, that right turn lane is being built for this development. But when Lone Tree gets fully expanded, it will be incorporated into the final condition of Lone Tree.
Okay, I was more concerned about that intersection of Zuni and Lone Tree.
Okay.
There's no, there's not even painted crosswalks for you to cross Lone Tree. So even though there's now a sidewalk that'll be terrific to have along Zuni, you, there's not a crosswalk to get across Lone Tree. So, you know, I would hope that there would at least be mitigation to have crosswalks painted in that intersection on all four directions. So that would be my one, my one concern. And then what happens if the bus stops do go in? There's no room on that street for a bus pullout. How does, what does that usually look like on a street like this? That's one lane each way, two bus stops, but no room for a bus pullout? How did, can you speak to that?
I couldn't see if perhaps Steph Santana might be able to assist.
Most of my, my questions are about that part of it. And how, and how you evaluated it? Did you, were you here for my question? I didn't know.
Yes, I did hear them. My name's Stephanie Santana, I'm a transportation engineer here for the City of Flagstaff. For those bus stops, we've placed them in locations along the road where if there are a long line of people waiting for people to board and alight, I think that's how you say it, right, to get on and off the bus, people can sneak around them in a, in a fairly safe manner. The site distance is good enough for them to do that. So we've put the, strategically put the bus stops in locations where, where people can go around that bus.
Okay, and would, would the city be amendable to at least painting crosswalks all four directions at Lone Tree and, and Zuni?
Yeah, so in order to paint a striped crosswalk across an intersection, there is an analysis that has to be done. There needs to be enough pedestrians crossing at that location to meet a warrant for a striped crosswalk. I think the plan at this intersection, future, future plans is around about. So I, I don't think at this time we've received many concerns about that intersection of people trying to cross and they've struggled. So it is something that could be studied and counted to see how many are crossing and if that would warrant. But we wouldn't just require the project to stripe that.
Okay, so full disclosure, I live in the area, so I use that intersection all the time. And, you know, one of the sailing, selling points was now we have a sidewalk on Zuni and you can cross the street to get to the CCC campus, but you really can't safely. It's a very fast intersection, it's basically downhill both ways. It's 35 miles an hour right now. So, you know, it also gets icy. I would think that, you know, it's probably premature to talk about a reduction in speed limit or anything like that. And we're far out from a circle, but at least getting crosswalks there. And then my question also on Zuni, once traffic leaves the Bow and Arrow neighborhood, where they're 25 miles an hour, it goes to 35 until you get to Zuni. And, I'm sorry, until you get to Lone Tree. I would hope that that stretch of Zuni, as this goes in and starts construction, that that would then be lowered to 25 residential because of construction, because of potential, but, you know, bus stops, all the things that'll be happening on that street. What's the process for making sure that that might get a lower speed limit?
So Zuni is classified, I believe, as a minor collector roadway. And those are typically set at 30 miles per hour, which I believe is what it's set at right now.
It's 35.
Okay, they might go from 30 to 35 for the minor collector. There are no houses fronting that road, so it definitely acts as a, more of a collector roadway than a residential roadway, if that makes sense. But we are often getting requests like this and we put out some traffic counters and, and see how, how fast people are going. And we could start a process if this is a request in our transportation engineering.
Do I need to do that as a citizen? Do we, how would, how would one go about doing that?
Let's start off with an email. So she can shoot me an email or Jeff Baumann an email and we can get the conversation started internally.
Okay, all right, thank you for addressing that. That was all the questions I had for staff.
Thank you.
All right, so the applicant has a presentation?
Yes, and I had a real quick question.
Question, I'm sorry.
So on Masonic Lane, I believe that's Center North-South Road. I saw that the cul-de-sac on the south end looked like it went off property. Is that true? Is it connecting to another property to the south?
So it does connect to, you can sort of see it here. It does connect to the subdivision to the south. Was there a follow-up question?
No, I was just curious what was going on there, so yeah, thank you.
So it provides access to the subdivision to the south. It is a change between a private street tract and an access easement. I believe that cul-de-sac was a requirement at the time. So with that, I'll introduce the applicants. I don't, is Tom, Tom, are you coming up? Tom Staub with, with Red Oak. And this is your presentation.
Hello, Commissioner. Some of you I've seen before at the meetings, so it's good to see you again. And please, I don't know anything about traffic, so that's for Luke. So give me a little bit for that. It's great to be here, this is one of my favorite cities in the United States. I have, I started coming here back in 2016. And then shortly after, we, we bought some land out west of Flagstaff to do some projects out there. And we had a motivation to always want to be in Flagstaff. But as you know, land is very expensive and it's very finite. And then we came across an opportunity here to really bring one of our, you know, what I would say proud concepts to, to Flagstaff. So it's great to be here. On the line, I do have our lead architect and one of our engineers. And of course, Luke Caraway here will be answering questions around traffic and dark sky and all of that. So name is Tom Staub and I'm the CEO of Red Oak Development Group. We've been around since 2010. We are based in awesome Texas, but we, we do work here in Arizona as well. If I could do a lot of work here in Flagstaff, I would prefer to, but it's just not a lot of land, like I said. So today, just a brief overview of a few things and we'll keep this short and sweet, more questions for you all. I, I do want to just take a moment because I think Ben hit on a really important point around the affordable housing. And just this week, I think if you haven't seen the headlines, the average home price now in America is $435,000, which is, I mean, it's pretty astounding and not, I don't think in a positive way, frankly. If you look at homeownership, it is decreasing. You're seeing a lot of multi-generational housing where children are living in with their, their parents longer. That's prohibiting the motivation for family formation, really big problems that we're having. Even in Texas, we're seeing massive issues with affordability. And it can be related to the cost of land, which we know is very high here in Flagstaff. I just got a bid for, you know, transformers and meter loops on one of our projects. And with all these data centers that we're hearing about, it's putting a huge demand on cost of electricity to a point now where our costs are three times what they were last year. Right, so just another example of a lot of pressures on affordable housing. And I think it's not going away. So with that said, we are proud to announce, you know, as Ben mentioned, that we are giving the largest contribution in the history of the program of Flagstaff. So that we cannot figure out a way to build affordable housing, but that is our commitment to you all to hopefully take that money and do something with it in the name of homeownership. Because it's, it is a really critical thing that we have, that we have to figure out as a, as both private and public entities. With that said, quick introduction as to who we are. I know we're just, we're just a name, but to us, it's, it's been a long journey as to how we come to be who we are. And we take a lot of risk in our projects across both Texas and Arizona. You know, if you talk to a lot of developers, they, they have a different focus. We are fortunate to be a family-operated company, me being the first one to start it. And God forbid my, my boys take it over, you know? But we, we really try our best to create these community-centric plans. And there's a great concept called Strong Towns that we have been trying to do some innovative stuff across all of our projects. And oftentimes, we're this crazy developer that is pushing the boundaries far beyond what they should be, particularly in Texas. And so you will see in our commercial districts where we don't have any fast food restaurants and we have more bespoke retail concepts. And everything's, you know, local vendors and local business people. And you will see that we invest a lot of money in parks and early on activation through programming, through our HOA, wellness. And then we have our, our nonprofit with teachers where we give down payment assistance to teachers. And now we're expanding that with Habitat for Humanity and our EMS workers as well. And then, of course, we build homes where we see fit. So we build, we work units, we, we build very innovative projects such as this. But I think what I would hope that you all receive out of my presentation today is you see the intentionality of how we plan. It's been three years in the making and we've spent a lot of time, thousands of hours, with land planners and architects and landscape architects that are local. The GC is local, he's been here for 30 years. We have spent an enormous amount of time ensuring that what we're doing here is, is one, as low disturbance as possible, but trying to bring something different to the region that they haven't seen. So off, off the, the soapbox. That said, I am the, the person that has to deal with all the headaches day-to-day, but there's a huge team behind us that really are the visionaries. And, you know, I'll, I'll make a few callouts here. So Dallin Architecture, as well as our, our architecture on the phone, award-winning architects. Mark Lynn was trained in Copenhagen, many awards, and he was the lead designer on this project. Terry Slavik Suzuki was named Most Impactful Woman in, in, in Real Estate in 2024. She herself has put on the ground 31 matched plan communities across the nation. And she often challenges me to push these crazy ideas, you know, go hard on wellness, think differently about getting rid of nat, nat gas in your communities, bring something to consumers that they want, you know, bring in vet clinics and groomers early on in these communities, really funky ideas that I, I love. My investors don't, but I, that's, that's my challenge. And then, of course, the team above here really helps me keep everything, you know, in, in one organized operation. So with that said, just again, a quick aerial of where this is. This is very close to NAU, it's a gorgeous property with some topo that we have really tried to use to the benefit of, of the project. And of course, you know, this is next to Capstone and Pine Canyon and what have you. So I am going to let Mark talk here in a second, but I, again, this is where it's important to, and we're going to go into a lot of details here, to understand that we're being very intentional with the materials that we're, we're sourcing, where there's being sourced from, their, their impact of traveling from one place to another as, as relates to bringing it on-site. And I think the one key takeaway is we're really not trying to pronounce these homes. We're trying to let the, the land be pronounced and these homes kind of be tucked in. That's, that's kind of the whole concept behind this concept. So with Mark, with that, would you mind giving us, you know, how did this inspiration come about? What are the origins of the design here? It is different than what we see in Flagstaff. Would you mind giving us a little spiel?
Yeah, thank you, Tom, and hello, Commissioners. My name is Mark Lynn, I'm the Architect of Record and Director of the team that designed Pine Haven. And Tom asked me to talk about the inspiration and that's really simple. You know, it's, it's the Cocoino Pine Forest. I'm, I'm a native Texan, but I went to grad school at ASU down in Phoenix. And I can tell you that I and all of my friends wished that campus was in Flagstaff. I'm sure you're glad it's not, but we would much have preferred to be in the forest than down in the desert. I also hiked the Grand Canyon when I was a scout. And I, I, doing my research in grad school, I, I spent a lot of time traveling around the state. So I'm very familiar with Flagstaff. I've got a background in sustainable design. I, you know, the whole motivation of this is to try to let our buildings be the backdrop to the forest rather than the other way around. So to do that, again, meeting the city's requirement about solar reflectance values, the majority of the buildings are painted a dark color, which helps them recede into the environment rather than pop out. And we've tried to keep the massing compact, just the way we've also created the site plant where the buildings are compact to preserve most of the forest around them. The roof is kept very simple. It's to intentionally shed snow and water towards the back into the landscape. We've kept our floor-to-floor plate heights lower than what's typical in most new townhomes and most residential development to keep the heights of these units low and to let them not stand out as much in the environment. Every bedroom and all the major public spaces in all of the units open onto either a balcony or a patio. And we've tried to create as much openness on the ends of the units to let in as much natural light as possible and to connect the interiors with the natural environment outside. On, on the interiors, we've selected materials that we feel reflect some of the textures and colors and materials of the, of the forest itself. Most of the flooring is going to be wood. We're bringing in a lot of colors from the forest in our interior finishes. But probably the most important thing that we've done with the design of Pine Haven is follow the WUI design guidelines. The WUI code, as you may or may not know, stands for Wildland Urban Interface. And it is a series of guidelines of how to build buildings, not just homes, but buildings in general, to resist the spread of wildfires. And that's something that greatly influenced the design of this community. We consciously eliminated a lot of the large roof overhangs that characterize some of the older buildings in the, in the region. I don't know if you guys followed the terrible fires that happened in the Los Angeles area just this January, although it seems like a longer time ago than that. But entire communities were wiped out. And in part because many of the older homes had big, broad roof overhangs. So those are areas where flying embers gather, they get up into attic spaces. And once the roof is gone, the whole building is lost. People lost their homes, entire communities were destroyed. The buildings that survived those fires are the ones that were designed specifically according to these WUI guidelines. And as a result, they not only survived the fire, but they protected people's lives, their possessions. So that's, that's what we tried to do. We, in designing our buildings, followed functional criteria and made choices along those lines. We didn't just wake up and decide it's going to be Tudor or it's going to be some style or the other. So that's really where the form of the buildings come from. And we're, we're very proud, I think, that we have designed not only a very aesthetically appealing community, but that it's one that will help stem the spread of wildfire, should that ever happen in this area. So I, I think that's really where it came from. We, we tried to design by criteria and not styles. And I'm confident that it's going to pay off. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Mark. It's passion, it's pretty great. Just some other things that we're doing. Again, I'm, I love the idea of wellness, as does Terry on our team, our CMO. So we, we are investing quite a bit of money on this, on this facility where it will be available to all of our people in our community. And not quite sure yet on the programming if it's going to be free or not to the public, but the event space is definitely open to the public. The Sonic Cold Punt facilities, that, that can be tricky if you live there. I, I don't know if I want everyone coming in and using my same bathtub, but that's more TBD. But the, the center can be used by the public. I'm not sure what elements yet, but it is accessible to the public. With that said, I think this is the nitty-gritty of the engineering. So just a few things, we went back and forth and, and when I first talked to Ben about these, these neighborhood meetings, I was a bit concerned. And then all these people showed up and said, wow, there's a lot of people in Flagstaff that know their stuff. A bit nervous the first time, but I found it quite informative. It, it helped us shape our, our plans around snow. Texans don't see snow very often, so that was a revelation that we had. And I heard a lot of concern around, you know, fractional ownerships and short-term rentals. And in a, in a hard market, it's, it's a big choice to say no rentals because obviously that's a marketing tool. But yeah, again, we, we took the feedback, we heard the traffic, we heard about the dark ordinance, which we already had. And we brought it back into the DA and, and we're not doing fractional ownership, we're not doing short-term rentals. So we heard you and I, I thought I'm very helpful overall. And the second time, there was less people there, but it's still very helpful. So with that said, I, I do want Luke to come up just to talk about a few things, mainly the resource impact, the traffic. And we can obviously hit on the dark sky and whatnot. I'm going to stand behind him, so I'm not so short.
Good afternoon, how are y'all doing? Um, you know, honestly, Ben did a really phenomenal job at, at laying all of these things out. So I don't know that there's really a whole lot that I have to say that you guys haven't seen from his previous presentation. I think, you know, overall, what we're hanging our hat on with some of the items that we're proposing is, you know, really focusing in on multimodal transportation, providing the bus stop improvements, providing a, not only sidewalks on, on a sidewalk on Zuni, another sidewalk on Lone Tree, and also a parkway, which I think is, is a pretty important improvement, right? Because it really makes the pedestrian feel all. Because it really makes the pedestrian feel a lot more safe when they're walking down Lone Tree, giving, giving them that separation. And then allowing that to connect into our development with open space trails that are, that will be open to the public. So I think there's really, you know, and then also the bike lane as well on Zuni. I think there's really a lot going in here that, that really kind of promotes that. Also, one thing too, you know, I know there's been a lot of concerns around traffic and I think that's absolutely valid, but I do think another thing that our development is bringing to the table is we do have multiple connections to Zuni and Lone Tree. Whereas, you know, we ba, we basically have four points of connections, two, two on Masonic, another one on Zuni and another one on Lone Tree. So that will serve to really help circulation through the community and help disperse peak trips. You know, and, 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 you know, work to improve the traffic situation. I think, o- other than that, you know, we, Ben touched on the dark sky ordinance, which is also in our, our development agreement. Obviously, the disturbance on our site is, is a very, is a very low disturbance. You know, only, really only building out forty percent of the site and, and leaving sixty percent of the site to open space activity. I think that's really all I have today and we look forward to any questions that you all have and, and continuing the discussion with you.
Luke, can you please state your name? Just for the record and, and who you're with?
Yes, Luke Caraway, I'm president of Viewpoint Land Solutions and we're the project engineer for the Pine Haven project.
Okay, any questions from the commissioners to the applicant?
I have one question. On the site plan, in the open space area or the natural area, there is an observation deck that was noted that was not part of the previous information. Could you talk about that?
It's been a journey. So the first neighborhood meeting, there was, you know, I'm very cognitive feedback from the neighborhood. There was enough pushback on that where we said, you know, it's not going to be in, in the direct line of sight, but it's, it's concerning people enough where let's figure out what else we can do. So the second meeting, we came back with a new idea, which was a reduced, like park facility and we called it Pine Cone Park. It was a really cool idea. And again, there was still pushback on even that, so. You know, we, we've decided to kind of keep it more of a prairie sense where it's still walkable trails throughout and just avoid obstacles and, and, because it is the highest point of the site. So we decided just to remove anything that could be seen as an obstacle and just keep it trails and open space.
Okay, so I see there, there are benches and there's a, a trail, which is lovely. And the large pine cone structure is not there anymore. It was just the ops, the addition of the notated observation deck. Is that a new feature?
No, that's, that's, that was the first iteration, which is now.
That was the pine cone and it is now gone. Is that correct?
Well, it was a, it was a deck that got pushed back, went to the pine cone, pine cone, which was still very great, I thought. That was pushed back as well. And so now it's just more of the park space and trails.
Okay, so that's not part of it. Okay, thank you. Any other questions by commissioners? Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing portion of this. If there's anybody here from the public that has comment on this agenda item, you would need to fill out a speaker card. And you'd have three minutes to make any comments. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Online? Have anybody?
I was going to add in something only because, as I disclosed, I live in the area. I am a community member of Pinnacle Pines. And I was very careful that my husband and I, as we participated in the community meetings, that we wore our neighbor hat. And now I'm here today as my commissioner hat. But I wanted to contribute to the public hearing portion that, that I, you know, that we did attend and send emails through the citizen, community participation portion. Then we found, I found the applicant to be very receptive as well as seemingly responsive to the concerns of the community. And there were commitments made to the community and, you know, wanted to make sure that they were carried through to this step of the process that what we all saw is what came here. And so some of my questions did get answered, especially about the pine cone versus observation deck and all of that. Glad to hear that it is, as was presented to the community, just more of a trail system with with benches. I was wondering though, back at the October meeting, it's actually my question about the rooftop deck on the clubhouse and there wasn't going to be an open air rooftop deck. And in the, in preparing for today's hearing, I see that there's a rooftop deck back out there and I was wondering of how that transpired. That concerned me not only as a neighbor, but as a resident of Flagstaff, the city of Flagstaff. The council has often talked about noise issues with rooftop decks, et cetera. So I was wondering if you could speak to that.
Yeah, and again, there, Mark Lynn, I could be wrong here, but we, we did in fact remove that rooftop deck as well. And mainly, there was a lot of, yeah, there was the noise concern. But also the, the risk of flooding and, and what happens in those things. So Mark, is that removed?
Yeah, it, it's gone. There, there were a lot of reasons, but there will be no rooftop deck.
Okay, great, thank you. I didn't know if that was requiring a, any sort of a drawing update or anything like that. And I think my only other question was about signage and I know that gets looked at more closely later on as far as scale of signage and monument signage, whether a sign can actually be backlit. Or I always thought everything had to be down cast lighting. This may be getting a little ahead of where we're at right now, but I was wondering if you could speak to that.
Thank you for recognizing that. Signage is not a part of, of the site plan review. It'll be reviewed and evaluated as part of a sign permit application.
Okay, thank you.
Be in performance with sign code.
That was all I had to add at this portion of the meeting. Is there any other public?
If I, if I may speak, there were two items that were addressed in, in this meeting that were not represented in the approved site plan, and that is that the observation deck be removed and that the rooftop rooftop deck to the, the amenity center also be removed. So I would ask that you, if you're going to make a recommendation of approval, that you incorporate that into the, the conditions that those items be removed so that the applicant will remove it moving forward.
Great. And no, and I, thank you for that clarification. And I, and I appreciate it in your staff report how you explained that this is a rezoning with a site plan and this is when everybody gets to see it. And it goes to building permits thereafter. So it's kind of a now or never sort of a thing to maybe address some of those bigger items. Am I, is that a good layman's summation? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
I have a few comments.
Okay.
Yeah. So first of all, I, I think this is a good product and looking at, I think it's a good location for it. I like what you guys have done. I think this is the first time I've heard the term strong towns brought to this commission, so that was interesting to hear that for once. So I thought that was good. I like hearing that you guys are not doing short term rentals. We've had applicants come before us and not commit to that. And I like hearing that people are listening to what the community is saying, so good on you on that one. I'll share that I have my concerns about the move away from natural gas and I think, you know, this is a bigger problem than we'll discuss here, but you know, you talk about a threefold increase in electric rates. I think it's only going to get worse. And there's been winters up here, we've lost power. And the only way I was able to heat my home was our gas fireplace. So I would like people to consider that maybe in five years, we're going to look back and say, hmm, maybe that wasn't the best idea. But otherwise, I think this is a great, great product.
Well, if it was worth at my own house, my wife tells me to turn on the, the, the fan constantly. So it's always a fan going in the house with our gas.
Any other comments from commissioners?
But let me close the public hearing because I think we, we're more to the part where we're deliberating and discussing. So if there's not any other public comments, I'll close the public hearing portion. Oh, we do have somebody that wants to speak? Yeah, that, I'm just, okay, come on up and then we'll have you fill out a card for the record.
My name is Michael Banker. I'm a resident, eight year resident of Pinnacle Pines. And I just had a couple of minor questions that hopefully are appropriate for this forum. If not, you can tell me where to go. When looking at the, the floor plans, I was just curious why the unit that has the smallest floor plans is a four bed, or the smallest square footage is a four bedroom home? That seemed odd to me. It was like eighteen hundred and some square feet. So that's just really a nit. I was just curious. And could somebody, maybe the developer or somebody clarify? Are you going to cut down sixty five percent of trees on the property? Is that what you understand or am I misinformed? Yeah, come on.
So our resource protection standards are quite complicated. But it is, it's based off of a point value for the trees. So it is not sixty five percent of trees, but sixty five percent of the points of those trees. So.
So how does that translate to the number of trees?
I, I wouldn't be able to tell you directly. It would be based off of the, the size of each tree, the diameter, breast height.
Is there someone that in the city that can tell me that?
It's just, that's not how it gets calculated because code is trying to give more weight to larger trees. So we're trying to get people to preserve the larger trees and remove more of the, the smaller trees. So it's just, it's not calculated like that. I'm not sure if the engineer who did the drawings can, can run that, but, but our calculations aren't based on percentage of individual trees.
So nobody can tell me how many trees are going to be cut down?
We can tell you a percentage of the total points determined to be on the site.
Maybe we'll take this offline. I just had an idea. Maybe the developer could consider this. Mary brought up the concern about the crosswalk striping. And the city said, um, not at this time, probably because of cost issue. I was wondering, would the developer be willing to pay? Because it's not that expensive to put in crosswalks, to pay for that. It's just an idea to think about. You don't have to answer me today, but something to think about.
I got some information from the, the project manager who runs the project for viewpoint side. And, and it, it appears that during our civil review, because our plans are currently in civil review right now, that it, that striping was requested at Zuni and Lone Tree and we've agreed to provide that. I don't think we've responded that way, Ben, yet, but I do believe it was a comment from staff.
Thank you.
And I think, I think the answer is absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
By, so that would be a four way striping. All four quadrants of the intersection would now receive a crosswalk striping. Okay.
I only have one more question, if that's okay. I'm curious, you're, the developers contributing one point eight million dollars so that they don't have to build affordable housing units in this property. And I think that's a great idea. My concern is, where does that money go? Who tracks it? And how often is the progress spend of that money reported to the city council? I don't want just to go into the ether and we don't know what, where it's being spent or how it's being spent. Which happens all too often. It's nobody's fault, but it happens. So that's my, that's my final comments and thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments within public hearing portion? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing and for our deliberations and discussions, any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Lukey?
I just wanted to reiterate what Ian had said about the short term rentals. This is the second developer we've had come forward and address it, and I really think it is important to our community, so I'm glad to see that. And I was also really pleased with the design. A lot of times we see things that could be built anywhere and this one really seems to fit with our community, so really good job. And also the event center, that that was open to the public. I think that's great. So great work.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheehy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of ques, one question and it follows up on Chairman Norton's original question on stipulation four or condition of approval four. When it said the city may schedule, what is, is there a criteria that people, you know, would go request this to the council and what are the parameters for how someone would act on trying to, if this doesn't go forward within a two year period?
Could you answer Alex?
So this is, I believe this is a stipulation in our zoning code that allows, so it basically especially these projects that are direct to ordinance, where it's tied to a specific site plan. We've seen where projects end up not being developed. They're still, the zoning is still conditioned to that site plan. So people can't develop that site plan, but they, so it, it becomes kind of stuck in this weird situation. So there is an allowance in code that, hey, after so many years, if, if you're not moving forward with that development, it could revert back to the old, to the old pre, prior zone. It could also be re, or the approved site plan could be amended. We've seen some projects like that where someone's come in and been like, it got rezoned based on that site plan, but I don't want to do that site plan anymore. I want to change to a different site plan. So we've had projects coming through like that. It's generally staff slash council isn't the one initiating these changes. It tends to be more developers coming through and saying, we, we've changed our mind, we want to do something else. And usually it's not reverting back, it's usually changing, changing what was approved there. But it's just, it's just a way to put in there. It allows us to say, hey, and if you don't develop it, we can always go back to what it was before. So.
The reason I'm concerned about this is, you know, it started in the eighties where people were doing conditional zoning in various cities in the state. And then, once you had a recession, all of a sudden, neighbors and other people are saying, we don't want that zoning, we want it reverted. And it created quite a mess and a stir. And in a place like this where we want, well, one, from a planning perspective, if you change a zoning today, it should be good in two years. I can see conditionally, you know, putting restrictions on a site plan. But I think it's a dangerous thing where we're trying to get affordable housing. And then if something happens, the next developer, say there's a recession or something happens and these projects go away. And historically, I've seen it for forty five years. Most jurisdictions and the counties that I'm familiar with have removed this from their zoning. And maybe that's a whole nother discussion. But it just is concerning because if the zoning is a good choice now, it should be in two years. Maybe you do the conditional site plan approval and get out of this quagmire where someone can come along and say, okay, the property was rezoned, but I want to do a different site plan and process that. It's just the high risk of doing an entitlement is even more pronounced now. It's so expensive, it's so risky. And I'd hate to see if we make a decision, yeah, we think this is, if it passes or we make a recommendation that the zoning is good. Why would it even go into this quagmire from a developer's perspective? You know, I would look at something like this if I was looking at a property and it'd be big red flag. It's, so maybe it's another discussion for another topic, but I've not seen this kind of a. But I've not seen this kind of a condition in many years in most of the valleys and metro area and counties, um, approvals.
It's a pretty typical condition in our rezones that we've done. And again, it doesn't, it doesn't mean after two years it gets triggered. It just gives us the flexibility that after two years, it could get changed back.
Yeah, and that's why I said it's, it's a risk on both sides of the fence if that happens. So maybe that's a whole nother discussion for another time. But it's kind of antiquated to do this. I've not seen it done in quite a few years. So that's why I'm, it's just something that most jurisdictions, because of the problems they've had, maybe because Flagstaff's smaller with not a flood of rezonings coming in or getting into this quagmire. Or what if a resident decides, you haven't done this in two years? Can they bring that case forward and make a request to council?
I'm not sure. I mean, I think that they possibly, I, I haven't read the code in a while. Like I said, it tends to just be a standard condition of the rezone that allows us that flexibility.
And just to elaborate, I think code really just says that it's, it's at the discretion of council, um, whether a member of the public can, can make a public comment. I believe they would be able to do so, requesting action from, from council. But that's without, um, concrete information about the process.
And see, that's where I've seen it start. When the recessions start, some people see this, and then this whole process starts. And I remember once in a hearing, the attorney that ran the case two years ago wasn't even being paid and came forward and said, I'm here just as a resident because two years ago, we agreed this was a good use. And no one was there from the owner or whatever to defend it. So, I mean, it, it's happened more often, many times I've seen. That's why I was surprised to see it as still a condition of approval. But moving on, as far as this specific project, I think it's very well done. I really like the architecture and I echo what Commissioner Sharp and Commissioner Lukey has said. I think it's a really good project. The architecture, I think, really fits the site. I like the staggered roof lines. I like the clustering. I think it's very well done, all north-south facing units, pretty much. So I would be voting for approval.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
The gentleman who made the comment about the housing fund and like transparency around that, is the city going to post at all? Because I, I looked it up and there's like no posting of it. And it is a significant amount of money. So.
Yeah, I don't have that money. But, um, to answer your question, I do have Justina Costa with Housing Division available, perhaps to answer some, some affordable housing related questions.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Justina Costa. I'm the Assistant Housing Director. I'm happy to answer any questions. One of the questions that I can answer just right off the bat is that housing absolutely is excited about this potential contribution. As the developer said, it's the largest contribution the city will have ever received. What we do with that money generally is, um, put it toward affordable housing projects. Historically, with lower amounts, what we have done is we have helped fund our incentive policy for affordable housing. And that policy, the purpose of that policy is to help developers incorporate affordable housing into their market rate developments by offsetting fees and, um, things of that matter that are not regulatory. It's mostly, mostly fees of, that the city charges. So we'll pay those on the developer's behalf. To answer, um, one of the public comments, we absolutely track the funds that we receive and are fully accountable for that money. So those are the questions I caught right off the bat. Thanks, Ben, for the opportunity to talk. But I'm happy to answer any other questions you all may have.
I have a question to add to that, and that I'll tag on to. When it's, when it's a larger amount like this, does this, um, have the potential to allow the city to actually build affordable housing on the properties that they own?
It's a very good question. Historically, the city has had the council direction not to become a developer ourselves. That is something that we've, we partner. So what we've done in the past is we've partnered with for-profit and nonprofit organizations in order to actually construct housing directly. There is a presentation coming to city council in September from the housing section that will ask for, um, some guidance from council on future development on city-owned land. And so we're hoping to get some more information then from what this current council wishes for us to do. But historically, no, we have not developed ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Um, I had a, both a compliment and a, and a question slash concern. I'm very pleased that the restriction of short-term rentals is going to be written into the DA. That actually, you know, the bigger discussion, um, at, at the community meetings was about the initial, um, sales program of fractional ownership. Um, and so even though you're not doing it, you've agreed not to do that, I was just wondering, you know, I mean, commitments kind of need to be in writing. You know, there's, at what point is this, you know, there's room to allow it without it being in writing somewhere? I know that is not typically something that gets put into a DA, um, nor can we ask for that. I'm just saying, commitments are best in writing. Um, and I was wondering if, if there was any, um, you know, entertaining the idea of making that a more formal commitment by the applicant?
Allow the applicant to speak then.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so, um, again, our CMO, Terry, uh, we, we spoke about this because it was, it was an idea that we hadn't really thought it was going to happen or not. And she said, um, at this scale and the fact that you don't own hotels or any of that, this will be a disaster. So, so go nowhere near this. So we're okay to commit to that in whatever form is legally, you know, and compliant.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. Anything else? I, I have a list as we talk about, um, our voting and our need for, um, recommendations. These are the recommend, these are the recommendations that I have kept track of that we would need to add to a, a recommendation of approval. That there is, that the plans show that the rooftop deck is deleted off the clubhouse, that the pine cone feature and/or observation deck is removed from the open area trail system. So those two elements, uh, that there's now no fractional sales also added into the DA in the same manner as the short-term rental limitation. That there will be four-way striping for crosswalks at the intersection of Zuni and Lone Tree. My commission, my question to my fellow commissioners is, would you be willing to add to our recommendation as a commission that we encourage the council and the city to formally look into lowering the speed limit on Zuni, on that stretch of Zuni from thirty-five down to twenty-five? I will pursue it as a citizen if we don't, um, but I think it would have more weight if it, you know, if it came from us, if, if we were in agreement. Thoughts?
The only reservation I have about that is if we have a process and we're going around the process that the city uses to decide the, uh, speed limit in certain areas, I just wouldn't want to, um, set a precedent.
Right. I guess I was wondering if it, um, it would give the opportunity for council to direct the traffic division to start, um, a test, uh, you know, a test of the road. Am I wrong in, in, and then how that would work? I don't want to, I don't want to be asking for something that's not possible. I was just wondering, you know, if council has the ability to say, can we do a traffic study on this area? Or not a traffic study?
He hasn't abandoned.
Uh, you know, I'm going to let you use the proper verbiage on this.
Hi, Steph Santana, Transportation Engineer again. So we did something very similar along Butler, where I believe it was council that directed us to do a study along Butler. We did a study. We sealed the study and we recommended a specific speed. And then council went about and, um, trumped that and changed the speed on Butler. I don't know if you guys were aware of that. So, um, we also have a process in residential neighborhoods where, um, a citizen puts in a petition and gets a few neighborhood signatures. Those are typically on residential roads. I think a minor collector may be able to fall into that, that, that way. So there's a couple of different routes of doing this. And I, I might get some recommendations from the traffic engineer on this. But I, I'm struggling to also see how that affects this project. I don't know if that, it should be placed on, um, the developer to, to make that determination or to help pursue this.
I see your point, yeah.
I, I would like to come back to the crosswalk discussion. So I, I tried to explain that we are not allowed to just stripe crosswalks along an arterial roadway like Lone Tree with the speed limit of thirty-five over there. There needs to be a study done. So we are allowed to put crosswalks, striped crosswalks where there's stop bars, so where it's a stop controlled. So there can be one on CCC driveway and on Zuni, but crossing Lone Tree would require a study.
Okay, so I guess, yes, and there are crosswalks where there is the stops currently. It's just that, I mean, if we now have a sidewalk on Zuni, then you now have to go all the way up to the top of JW Pal, you know, to safely and law-abidingly cross Lone Tree. Is that something that, I mean, if we, we put it in our recommendations that these are things that should be looked at, um, I, I, I think there's extra weight in having council ask and have this discussion with the traffic division. I also see your point on, it's really not part of this site plan and rezoning. So I see that discrepancy. Yeah. I don't quite know where to go with that. Alex, any advice for us as we work on recommendations? I mean, are we out of our, uh, parameters by talking about Zuni and Lone Tree? And yet, both of those streets were part of their traffic input, uh, in, impact study?
Um, I, I like to defer to engineering.
Okay.
Um, I trust them and their systems and process. I think that there are, Steph really wants to talk, but I feel like there are plans in place to improve that area. And, and sometimes, sometimes we need to wait and let that happen. But I'll let Steph address.
Is it okay that I add something to that?
Yes, please.
So part of the transportation impact analysis, it was actually a very small analysis. Our threshold for requiring a traffic statement or a transportation impact analysis is a hundred trips in the PM peak hour. And I believe they were about fifty-six. So they actually did not, they were not required to provide an official TIA, except because this is a rezoning case, they were required to provide something. So, um, they put together a, a traffic statement, but they did not have to go as far as studying that intersection. So their traffic statement just encompasses a right turn warrant analysis. So it was such a small project that they didn't warrant looking at, um, other things. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Although that brings me back to my earlier comment of it was done three years ago in December. But I'll just leave that alone. All right. Does anybody have any opinions about this? Because I'm leaning toward pulling out the traffic recommendations and going about it another way.
I think that's prudent.
Okay.
And, but as long as your concerns are forwarded in some way.
Yeah, and I would, I would do that. Because as that area grows, there are concerns. Aside from this, our section of JW Pal is forty. And all the new DAs for the entire extension, there's, it's thirty-five in the DA. So, I mean, we, we have some speed limit issues surrounding that area as it continues to grow, not just Zuni and Lone Tree as well. But that's just a little aside. All right, so then our, if we were to recommend approval, it would be with the conditions or the recommendations of the rooftop deck, the pine cone removed, observation deck reference removed, um, and adding in the fractional sales, uh, restriction. And the crosswalks and the issue of the speed limit on Zuni would come out. Okay. All right. Do we have a motion?
I, I will try to capture everything she stated here. Regarding PZ twenty-two zero zero one zero nine zero four, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval to the city council, including the four conditions and the additional ones just mentioned by Chairman Norton.
Have to say, with the, according to the findings on the staff report.
Sorry, Alex, according to the findings.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Ah, Joshua is on board. Welcome. Vote recorded. Were there any nays? Okay. The recommendation moves ahead with those conditions, I guess. Thank you so much. All right, moving on, um, to six B, a public hearing for the CUP extension request, PZ dash two four dash zero 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 four six for Mountain View Baptist Church.
Good evening. Just opening the presentation here. All right, thank you, Chair and Commission. Bethan Hang, I'm one of the planners with the City of Flagstaff. Tonight, the item before you is the Mountain View Baptist Church Building Addition, which you saw over, a little bit over a year ago. And tonight, um, the request before you is for a extension of the conditional use permit. The applicant is in attendance tonight. So just a quick refresher, this property is located off of twenty-one fifty East Linda Vista Drive, uh, located by that red star. And here's the vicinity map of this project site. So just a little bit of a refresher, a, a little bit of a year ago, um, on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, um, this item came before Planning and Zoning Commission with the proposed use of a building addition. And that building addition is, is intended to seat more than two hundred and fifty seats. Based on the zoning district, which is rural residential, this use requires a conditional use permit, which is why it came through a year ago. A year has since, has since elapsed and, um, no permits have been pulled, which is one of the conditions for the CUP to stay valid. And so that is why you're seeing this extension request of a hundred and eighty days today. If this extension for the CUP is granted, um, this new expiration date will be December twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. So as mentioned, when this original application came through last year in June, um, the conditional use permit was granted. There are a series of requirements that are tied to the CUP as listed on the screen, but really the main one is that a building permit needs to be issued with construction beginning, um, or the approved use has to be established. So since that has not happened yet in the past year, since last June, um, that's why you're seeing this request tonight. And highlighted in bold, it says there, "An extension has been granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission." And that's what's happening right now. So by approving this extension request, um, we will continue the lifetime of the CUP until December. So another refresher here is that site plan, the red arrow points to that proposed building addition. And then here is that floor plan showing what the proposed, um, building addition will look like. Again, it's proposed to seat over two hundred and fifty seats, um, seating three hundred and sixty-two seats. So in order for staff to recommend approval for a CUP, several findings have to be met. I am going to skim through the slides. The application has not changed since last year. And co-rerequirements for this type of use within this zone also has not changed. So nothing So nothing about the plan has changed. We are just requesting to extend um the CUP by a hundred and fifty days. But the first of which for findings is that the conditional use is is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code and the purpose of the specific zone. So by obtaining that CUP and this extension, they are meeting this finding. Um, the second one is the conditional use will not be detrimental to public health, safety or welfare. As discussed a year ago, um, this finding is met and none of these are triggered. And then the lengthy finding is that characteristics are reasonably compatible with uses permitted in surrounding area per the following. And I have the different subsections listed on the screen. Again, I'm going to skim through these slides and um later at the point of questions, if um we need to go back to any of these slides, I'm happy to and to go into them in greater detail if needed. So first of which is access, traffic and circulation, adequacy of site open space resource provisions, noise, light, visual and other pollutants, style and sighting of structure in relationship to surrounding neighborhood. Here are the building elevations. Landscaping and screening, here's the landscaping plan. Impact on public utilities, signage and outdoor lighting, dedication and development of streets and impacts on resources. And then the extra findings that do not apply to this project. So because this was a CUP request, last year, they did go through the public participation requirement. They held one neighborhood meeting onsite on April twenty-fifth um last year with four neighborhood attendees, and their second required neighborhood meeting was waived. Uh, so with that, um, and in accordance with the findings, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission grant an extension of one-hundred-and-eighty days for the CUP with the following one condition, which is the same as the one last year. Um, at this point, I'll open it up for questions.
Any questions from Commissioners? So I just to to reiterate, so there's no changes to anything on the plans of the CP? Is this an extension because they have not started construction?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Is there applicant wanted or do you need to speak? Okay, great. Um.
Has any progress been made on moving toward construction?
I know internally, based on the system that we have that tracks all the permits, I know that they put in a permit for a retaining wall in the beginning of this year. Uh, but in terms of plans on the applicant side, I think Jim could speak to that maybe more. Um, do you want to, Jim?
All right, good afternoon. Um, we have, and I just had a conversation with the architect. I mean, we even employed him quite some time ago. Things have not moved along too quickly. And I had a conversation with him yesterday about this. I said, because of this meeting, I asked him, can you give me an idea when plans will be complete? And he told me three to four weeks. So that might be five or six. That's kind of unfortunately the nature of the business, but I I bet in a month we'll ha- we'll hide the plans and then hopefully we can, you know, get some other stuff done and and finally move along with this project.
How are your costs doing with all the time delay?
Say what?
How are your costs doing with all of this delay? Are you able to just go meet the parameters?
We have started putting some numbers together, but without completed plans, you know, really don't have the numbers. That's way too risky without that to know for sure.
Good luck.
Yeah, for sure.
Uh, any other questions? All right, is there a motion to extend this CUP?
Mary, I think this was a public hearing, so just make sure.
Thank you. All right, opened public hearing. There were no public comments, closed public hearing. And now, uh, if there's any other deliberations or a motion.
Regarding PZ twenty-four zero-zero-zero-four-six, I move to approve the extension request.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, and the motion passes. Thank you for being here. Thanks, Beth. Um, moving on to six, general business, A, a request for preliminary block plat approval for Canyon Del Rio Phase Two.
Hi, I had a lovely presentation prepared for you. However, the applicant has requested that we pull this item from the agenda. So um hopefully I'll bring this back to you soon.
Okay, all right, um. Moving on to number seven, is there any miscellaneous items to and from Commissioners? Um, I just wanted to, thanks, Alex, for your part in coordinating the workshop between the Commission and Council. I thought it was really helpful and um a good conversation and a great presentation by everybody that you brought up to up to us. Um, so thank you for your part in that.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, then we adjourn adjourn at five thirty-seven.